The passage of time. We have shared your joy at the birth of your children and proudly we have watched them grow. We've taken care of your health care needs during the good times and the not so good. Your parents and grandparents have depended upon us. Together, we have shared the struggles and the wonders of life. At Oktibahaw County Hospital, we are celebrating thirty years of being your lifelong choice in health care.
This is Addison Lee.
Addison.
Addison Lee.
Right.
And that was Jerome Clark last night. About five hundred years. I'm saying that. We're at the part where we need an approval of the official agenda. Do we have some corrections on it at this time?
Mr. Mayor, I offer a motion to approve the agenda. And when you get to the point of discussion, you probably want to call for a point of discussion. I want to be recognized again.
Okay.
I want to approve the agenda with the following items deleted from the agenda. There are three items that I'm proposing to be deleted from the agenda. Roman numeral seven, mayor's business, consideration of the issuance of bonds for a new city of Starkville Police Facility. G, discussion of the construction of municipal complex and all municipal buildings. H, discussion of a referendum for the municipal complex and all municipal buildings. And I'd like for the first item under personnel to be moved to executive session off this adoption of this agenda with the following amendment.
You have a second, his motion?
Second.
Okay, we'll vote on those.
Mr. Mayor, I would like to offer an amendment to his motion then.
Okay, let's hear your amendment.
All right.
Mr. Mayor, could we discuss that before the amendment is offered?
Yeah, well, it's-
Well, we can go ahead and take that and then-
We can go ahead and vote on that and we can come back if it does not pass. Did all of you hear the, uh, the motion to remove under mayor's business declaring a bond issue for the city of Starkville under the board business? The, uh, uh, removal of a consideration for, uh, discussion of a municipal complex and also discussion of referendum for municipal complex. Am I right, Roy?
Uh, yes, sir. Those three bond-related items. Yes, sir, that's correct.
And then personnel to remove, uh-
Number one to executive session.
Number one to executive session. Now, that's the form of the motion. Uh, I would like to add one other item. Well, we can do this after we vote. Uh, is everybody clear what Mr. Perkins's motion is to remove those particular items tonight from the, uh, agenda? He has a motion with a second. I'll now call for a vote. All those in favor-
Discussion, 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 discussion. Mr. Mayor, thank you for recognizing me. Mr. Mayor-
I didn't recognize you. You just said for discussion.
Well, may I be recognized, Mr. Mayor?
You may be recognized.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Uh, Mr. Mayor, the reason I asked for these matters of, uh, the, uh, discussion of the, uh, of the bonds to be removed from the agenda, uh, we have a missing from this table tonight, my distinguished colleague from Ward One, Mr. Sumner Davis. And I've been on this board since July sixth of nineteen ninety-three. It's a senior member of the board. I want to, uh, go on record and show that the members at this table and the public can understand that it's been a longstanding practice that whenever any substantive business of the city is taken, we have always given the deference, the respect, the class and professionalism for all of the board members to be present. Now, it's time for us at this table to start, start showing complete leadership and recognizing that principle of decor. Now, back in April and May of this year, when I was absent from this board due to an unavoidable illness, the board went ahead and discussed major matters of the city in my absence. And that was entirely wrong. Now, that didn't show any respect to me. It didn't show any class. It didn't show any decor. It didn't show any professionalism. Now, here, um, it is obvious that there may be, um, a moving minority at this table that want to discuss the matters as to whether some five-point meat dollars in bonds should be issued tonight without the people voting on it.
Hmm.
Now, that's what it appears. Now, hopefully, I am wrong. Now, with the gentleman from Ward One absent tonight, you know, the people of Ward One need representation at this table. Now, when the vote was taken on September the twenty-sixth, there were two hundred and eighty-six people in Ward One for the bond issue, which represented fifty-one percent, and two hundred and seventy-seven voted against, which is forty-nine percent. That's a difference of nine votes. Now, hopefully, I am proven wrong here, but there's no need to have a rush tonight during this Christmas season wanting to, to vote on an issue about the issuance of, of bonds. And of course, and if this motion is defeated, you're going to get an opportunity to hear from me again at the proper time. And so, I'm calling upon this mayor to show leadership. I'm calling upon each member at this board to show leadership because it is dead wrong to consider and discuss some substantive matters and that are controversial at best with a member of the board from, um, not being in attendance here. It is time that we need to start recognizing that. It's, it's time for us to show the city of Starkville that we know how to act when a member of the board is out. We need to wait till Alderman Davis get back here before we discuss these matters. Now, obviously, he's away from this meeting tonight for some, I'm sure, unforeseen, uh, uncontrollable circumstance, but, but even in that regard, you know, we need to give the gentleman the respect, you know? And, and that's been no problem with some of the prior boards that I've been on. I mean, the prior boards have, have recognized that. They have adhered to that principle. And I don't know why that seems to be an, an issue here. It's been such a contentious, uh, time at this table since July of two double oh five. So, hopefully, my colleagues here, I'm sure many of them disagree with me, but, but that's what democracy is all about. So, I, I trust and hope that we can get a majority vote tonight, uh, to delete these three items from the agenda, move the matter on the, uh, uh, the first matter on the personnel to executive session, and let's wait until the next meeting and, and maybe if the gentleman from Ward One can come back before the nineteenth day of December, two double oh six, we can have a special call meeting that can be called by law by the mayor or any to Alderman. So, I don't see any, any real need to, to try to take these matters up tonight. So, I'm going to prepare to yield the floor and if the floor is, uh, if the, if the votes are there to keep these matters on the agenda, then I'll seek recognition from Mr. Chairman again at the proper time to speak to these matters. So, I call on, uh, the mayor in the event of a tie here, all my other colleagues and the, and, uh, to, uh, to vote, uh, in the affirmative for this motion. Let's, let's pass this motion. Let's get these matters off the agenda and let's give our distinguished colleague an opportunity to be present, appear here, and let him make a public stance on this and let give his people the opportunity to be heard. And, Mr. Mayor, I yield the floor.
Do we have any other one that would like to say anything about the motion at this time? I think, uh, he covered his thoughts very well.
Mr. Mayor, just one thing. Uh, my colleague, uh, from Ward Six was talking about items that are of substance and, uh, around which there is some controversy. I would just simply point out that if we were waiting for a full board for something like that, then the Catholic Church request would also be a matter of substance over which there is some controversy. The reduction in the size of the Planning and Zoning Commission is a matter of substance over which there is some controversy. And so, there are a number of items on this agenda that fit that particular category. And I would just offer that by way of continuing discussion.
Mr. Mayor, I accept an amendment from the gentleman from Three. He wants to include those to remove from the agenda. I accept as a friendly amendment.
Oh, uh, thank you, Mr. Perkins. At, at this point, I do not, I may or may not have a subsequent motion after we finish with this one.
Call for the question. All those in favor of Mr. Perkins', uh, amendment to the agenda, please raise your hand. All those opposed, raise your hands. We have a three to three vote, and I'm opposed to the amendment. So, we have a, an approval of the official agenda again in front of us.
Oh, Mr. Mayor, I would like to offer for the board's consideration, uh, the movement of certain items from the regular agenda to a consent agenda, subject, of course, to unanimous consent. Uh, and these I would recommend would be number, uh, Roman numeral number eight under board business, item B, the, uh, additional matching funds for the Tri-County Narcotics Force, uh, Task Force. The item, uh, Roman numeral nine, uh, A, one, authorization to advertise for bids for fuel farm equipment at the municipal airport. In, uh, the B item of Roman numeral nine, number two, the, uh, financial statement received and the payment for, uh, the first, uh, phase of the city's health insurance that was changed, uh, by way of changing companies. And then, still in item nine, number E, the authorization to advertise for bids for PVC water pipe. And number two, uh, the approval of an additional alternate in the amount of fifteen thousand dollars for the, uh, replacement of air blower at the Curry Street Filter Project.
Mr. McLauren, would you also be in agreement to remove number one to executive session and put numbers, uh, one on the Office of City Clerk on claims docket on the, uh, this consent agenda?
I'm sorry, say that again.
Would you be in agreement to put in the claims docket on the consent agenda and removing D one into executive session?
D?
For the, D one.
Personnel.
And personnel under Roman numeral nine.
Uh, I have no objection to the move, removal of that or the movement of that to-
To executive session.
Uh, executive session, uh, on the claims docket. Docket, there may be, need to be yea and nay votes. Uh, and in addition, I would add, uh, to executive session, a discussion of pending litigation, not potential, pending litigation.
Would you like for me to repeat the items on, uh, that is being offered for consent? You look under board business, item B. If you would look under departmental business, uh, airport, office of the city clerk, one, two, and three.
Just two and three.
Just two and three. Okay, he was asking about one, but you need a yea or nay on that. Two and three under the, uh, office of the city clerk. Personnel, item one, be removed to executive session. Under public services, it would be one and two that would be for consent purposes. Do I have a second to that motion?
First, uh, fellow members of the board, would you consider eight A, the advertisement of letters of interest for our respective boards, or do you feel the need for discussion on that as well?
Um, eight A, no, thank you, uh, Alderman. That is certainly appropriate for the consent agenda. I overlooked that. Thank you.
Because under personnel, item two follows one, would we, and one is going into executive session?
Yes.
Are we going to?
Uh, well, we can leave that on the-
No, it certainly would be appropriate because two follows one and they're all tied in to move that to executive session. Thank you for that, uh, contribution.
What was the one that Richard offered for?
Eight, eight A.
Eight.
Boards and commissions.
Eight A, board business, the first one up there.
Oh, I see, okay.
The advertisement for vacancies on boards and commissions.
And with those changes, I'll second.
We have a motion and a second with all the consent items on the agenda added. Uh, I'd like to add a clarification that, uh, under personnel, that has been removed to go to executive session and the item two would also follow, uh, the item one in personnel in executive session. With those changes-
Mr. Mayor, one other thing. Mr. McLauren, one other oversight here. Items H and I under board business, Roman numeral eight, let's consolidate and, uh, that into the mayor's business, eight. No need to whip that horse three times.
Oh, I have no objection.
Okay, let's, let's-
Moving H and I into the mayor's business.
G and H. G and H.
G and H.
G and H. All right. Would you like to make that at the beginning of the mayor's business, Roy?
Uh, would, no, no, sir. I just wanted all that part of it as one discussion.
Make sure that we get all that as part of all that as one discussion.
Yes, sir.
All right, are, are you clear and regarding what we did? We took in the board's business, we took, uh, uh, item G and H and removed it and put it into the mayor's business. And we have a second to the motion. All those in favor of this motion of adopting, approving the official gen, agenda, please raise your hands. Thank you. We have all that have approved that. One item that I must add that has been asked to be removed is the Mike Cracker issue that would be, uh, maybe she's, oh, item C on the board business. He requests that be removed. We will now continue with, uh, approval of the minutes of the city of Starkville Board of Alderman Regular Meeting on November the twenty-first. Have all of you had an opportunity to look at those minutes?
Remove approval of minutes of a regular meeting on November twenty-first, two thousand and six.
Second.
We have a motion to approve the minutes of November the twenty-first, two thousand and six. We have a second. All those in favor, say aye. All those opposed, nay. Brings us down comments by the mayor. We'd like to say that, uh, Mr. Sumner Davis is, uh, home taking care of a new baby girl, Addison Lee.
Addison Lee.
Yeah.
Correct.
Uh, so, uh, Davis and that, uh-
Seven point seven pounds.
Seven point seven pounds. It's last Thursday, is that right?
Last Thursday, nineteen and a half inches long.
My, you know all the vital statistics here. Nineteen and a half-
My wife, my wife quizzes me. I had to find out.
I see, okay.
Mother and baby doing well.
They're all doing well and we, uh, uh-
The father is not doing very well.
No, he seems not to be doing very well tonight especially. And we'd like to, uh, commend, uh, our firefighter for the year was Mr. Smith, uh, who received that award last night, uh, with the fire department, uh, and we're very pleased, uh, of his, uh, award.
Mr. Mayor, just one point I want to recognize. I want to recognize our fire chief, and I don't remember the exact award that he received. I saw his picture in the paper of just a few days ago for his recognition and contribution to, um, for, and for his outstanding service to, uh, to the, the fire, uh, department in the state of Mississippi. So, I, I just want to con, congratulate and commend the chief for his contributions.
Thank you.
Uh, chief, that was not Smith, was it?
Senator Hogan.
That's what I thought. It was Hogan, not Smith.
Firefighter Hogan.
Oh, it was?
Yes.
Okay. Sorry about that. Okay, that brings us down. Anyway, we, uh, want to congratulate that young man for being the firefighter of the year. Thank you for correcting that. Uh, this brings us down to citizen comments. I want to remind you that you have only three minutes and anything that you would like to say regarding to the city. And, uh, he's going to be the timekeeper tonight, so, uh, please, uh, hold your remarks to three minutes. And the floor is now open to receive citizen comments. If you would, if you would tell us what ward you represent and, uh, in your comments, please. Who your name is and what ward you're in.
Good evening to the mayor and board. My name is Alvin, Ward Seven. The citizens would like to thank the police officers for their quick response to a fight that broke out at the parade and, uh, good and no one got hurt, uh, no more than but the one that had to go to jail. The citizens would, uh, uh, like to continue to be patrolling of the, uh, uh, community land during this Christmas and holiday season. And, uh, we would like to, the Glifford Street Center that we barely need, uh, stove or something to heat food and a refrigerator. Those are some concerns of the citizens.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Good evening. Uh, my name is Tim Barnett. I'm from Ward Three. Uh, I'm a professor at Mississippi State University and I represent the Academy Place Homeowners Association. And I'm just here tonight to respectfully ask the board to not reduce the size of the Planning and Zoning Commission from nine to seven members. Uh, at the public hearing on this issue, uh, last month, as I recall, there were seven or eight individuals who spoke against this proposal, uh, representing numerous homeowners associations from different wards in the city, representing hundreds of households in the city. I believe there was one person who spoke in favor of this proposal. So, if the purpose of public hearings is for you to get a sense of the community's point of view on an issue, I believe you've got a clear point of view on this issue from the community at the public hearing last month. The only thing we, we heard as a reason for reducing the size of this commission is that some wards have two members and some wards have one. And that is true, but we did not hear any specific instances of how wards have been disadvantaged by that. Unlike this Board of Aldermen, the Planning and Zoning Commission members are not elected by a ward to represent that ward. They are appointed to represent the interests of the broader community, and indeed, I believe they have been doing that conscientiously. Uh, and so, it is, is our view that they are doing their job, they're doing it well, they're doing it conscientiously. The system isn't broken and we don't see any need to fix the system that is working. So, I'd respectfully again ask you not to make this unnecessary change in the Planning and Zoning Commission. Thank you.
And may I ask one question? How many are members of the board of the planning in your ward?
Two, sir. But let me just point out on that, on that question, that while we have two members now, if we maintain nine members on this commission, at some point, my ward will have one and some other ward will have two. And frankly, I couldn't care less as long as whoever is on that commission is holding, uh, has the community's interest and does not represent a single faction or interest group, but has the community and the neighborhood's interest at heart. Uh, so, while we might have two now, it is entirely likely that at some point, other wards will have two and we will have one. Thank you.
Anyone else that would like to take their three minutes? Ed, how are you this evening?
I'm just fine. My name is Ed Clinch and I live in Ward Three. And I wanted to briefly discuss two things which are on the agenda this evening. First of all, the police station. Uh, I would hope that the board could vote tonight to build a police station that meets the growth of the city and adopt a proposal as the, is in the mayor's, uh, proposal before you. Uh, there's been discussion of redoing City Hall. Frankly, I and some others, I think, have real questions about estimates in which no architect has been involved, in which no firm, these things are made. A lot of people can throw out numbers, but we need a police station that basically is state-of-the-art and meets the future needs of the city because the city is continuing to grow. And the fact that not every square foot may be occupied immediately and it's not going to be too small in a year is frankly, I think, on the good side. It will be full, the police department will grow, and we need to do that. The second item I'd like to talk about is one that's been be, referred to in the past about the Planning and Go, Zoning Commission. I was unable to attend the hearing. I'm sorry, I was, uh, not available that night, but, uh, I would hope we can continue to have, uh, seven people. Uh, I didn't even know we had two for my particular ward and I don't frankly care. I, I think that the, a group like this needs to have good people who have the interest of the city at heart. And secondly, we need to keep in mind, you have a broad range of interests that do need to be represented on this group and, and should be heard. And these include not just the standard things about race and gender, and currently that is very, very important, but also things like occupation, types of neighborhoods, uh, and also, uh, we, so that's another thing. But another thing too is, I understand the, unfortunately, sometimes these meetings are not attended by all members and that this could result in situations where there be a quorum. I guess a quorum would be, what, five, maybe? Four, I guess conceivably. And you could have three people approving an ordinance, and I, I don't think that's a good way to go. So, thank you all very much.
Uh-
Let me just say one more thing if I might may. I have a, personally have a commitment with a charitable organization, so the fact that I'm not staying is not an indication I have no interest in these matters.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor and Board, my name is Patrick Nordin and I represent, or I'm from, um, Ward Seven. I'm a, I'm here today as a representative of Starkville in Motion. As a group, we're committed to making our city a safe, walkable, and bikeable community. For the safety of the pedestrians, cyclists, and motorists in our community, we ask that you vote to maintain the integrity of the city's university drive bike lanes. Thank you.
Some of you know me. I'm the former city attorney. I'm Bill Stark. I'm from Ward One. Um, I have looked at the agenda tonight and I see that the board, mayor and board are considering, uh, some, some big expenditures, uh, for the city. And I don't know what, uh, we don't really know what we're vote, what you're voting on or what we're raising this money for. I, it, we don't know how it's going to be spent. When I was a city attorney, we annexed ten square miles to the city. We doubled the size of the city. And there's sewer that has not been completed. Uh, we promised the people in the annexed area that we would make infrastructure improvements in that area within five years, and that's actually in the court order and, uh, authorizing the annexation. I see nothing in here to, to spend that, any money on that area. Uh, this is something we're, if we spend, this is five, five million, almost six million here and, um, Parks and Recreation, another, double that, and then we're going to have interest. It's, it's going to raise our taxes considerably. We don't have a, we don't have a plan now. We just rejected the last plan on the, on the, for the traffic court and for the police department. I think Mr. Alderman Mills came up with a good idea in, in taking this building, which is a solid building, and turning it over to the police department and the court. And then, we could move City Hall if we want something attractive, find a, find a place somewhere else in, if, doesn't have to be outside the city, it can be downtown, could be at the Millsaps Building possibly. But, I mean, it can be downtown, but it could be a nice, uh, a nice facility for City Hall. And, uh, I don't think the police need any more than they would room than they would have in this building if we moved City Hall, uh, city clerk and everybody out of here. And I don't think it would cost millions of dollars to, to re, to, to remodel this building or to renovate for their use. Uh, this is already used as a court. It wouldn't take that much for this to be the court and then, and then the police could take over the rest of the building. You're not talking about millions of dollars here. I think a contractor could come in here and- talking about millions of dollars here. I think a contractor could come in here and give you a pretty good estimate for several hun, several hundred thousand dollars you could do it. And so I wish you would think about it before you just vote on this and try another bond issue that I don't think the public is supporting. So as, as evidenced by the, by the referendum that we just had, we didn't, we don't need to go through that again, I hope. So I would, I would ask you to, you know, look at what the needs are of the city and set priorities. And we were going to, we were going to widen Stark Road ten years ago. That was tops on the agenda, I remember, and the, for the Board of Aldermen. And, and we haven't, we haven't even three-laned it. I mean, we were going to, we were going to, and look at, it's a traffic hazard out there now to get into the movie theater. It's, it's a real problem. But we haven't even done anything with the roads. And we don't have money in the bank now to do anything to improve our roads. So I just think we need to take another look at this. And I hope you'll do that. Thank you.
Thank you. Who's next?
I'm Charles Henderson. I'm in Ward One. And since my Alderman's not here and not representing Ward One, I would ask that you not vote on this municipal complex tonight. I think we need to be heard from with our Aldermen. Thank you.
Next.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, sir.
I would like to see the city vote anytime we have a bond issue like this. I would like to see the citizens of the city voice their opinion rather than let the board do it. Let the citizens do it.
Anyone else?
I am Wendell Gibson, Ward Two, a former Alderman.
I'm Dr. Harry Cole, Department of Civil Engineering and a licensed civil engineer. Ladies and gentlemen of the board, at this meeting, you're being asked to approve a $5.9 million bond issue. You've already heard the mayor dictate that this be addressed despite the unavoidable absence of a member. Alderman Perkins, you are absolutely correct. This should be a full board attending this issue. The bond items include to raise money for the purpose of erecting police stations, plural, jails, plural, and other municipal buildings. For purchase of buildings and land therefore, land therefore, improving, adorning, and equipping the same, improving and paving streets and sidewalks and parking facilities, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. The cost and scope are continually increasing. I and many other like-minded citizens oppose this bond because it appears to be an attempt to bypass the legally binding referendum defeat by separating the components of that referendum into smaller parts. Two, this expenditure is not based on any planning or rational assessment of options. Three, there's no detailed account of how the money will be spent. Four, there's no limitation or explanation on how much other city monies, general fund, electric department, 2% money would be used to supplement costs that exceed the $5.9 million. The $5.9 million, which appears to be for a police station only, exceeds that would have been the cost of the earlier integrated complex. It even exceeds the $5.8 million police station, police department share of the defeated referendum. The past referendum was defeated for several reasons, including cost. These issues remain. Mr. Mills has made a proposal that serves to be heard. It provides for improvement of all city facilities at a cost that appears to be well less than $5.9 million. Certainly, it involves renovation of existing buildings, but the New County Court Building is an example of what can be done to an existing building to provide a first-class facility at a reduced cost. If cost were no object, then the city's needs, needs to explore other possibilities. One is a city campus which would be located, on which would be located all new city buildings. There are several sites on which this could be done. For example, many of us who supported the Coke Plant site saw the potential at this site. I believe the referendum would have passed even at the cost had a combined police building, court building on the Coke Plant site been the proposal. For tonight, the mayor is demanding that you give him a $5.9 million plus blank check without telling you or the public how it will be spent. There's no provision for a public referendum. Do you trust him? I certainly don't. Please do not approve this bond proposal without first requiring a detailed cost breakdown and a public referendum. Thank you.
Anyone else?
I'm Julia Feen Caillia, Ward Seven. I'm here on the, gosh, my garbage being picked up on Mondays and Thursdays. Somehow, if they miss Monday, they'll pick up on Thursday. If they pick up on Thursday, they don't pick up on Monday. Those are the two days that our garbage is supposed to be picked up, Mondays and Thursdays. And I'm not getting mine spicked up. I don't know whether there's an oversight or what's going on. I'd like to have some answers tonight, please.
Where do you live?
Over on Curry Street.
Curry Street. Ms. Brule, is that something that you can look into to find out? Excellent.
Okay. Well, she would appreciate that. I'm tired of putting garbage out and the cat standing up.
Is Ms. Boyd not here?
I know, so she's ill.
Next.
Ladies and gentlemen of the board, I'm Mary Catherine Cole. My husband and I live in Timber Cove, Ward Three. And we're totally opposed to the mayor's proposal to reduce the size of the Planning and Zoning Commission and to provide a path by which the projects can be bypassed, this commission. First, the commission was established at nine members to ensure that it could not be dominated by a small number of members. With only seven members, it would be possible for the project to be approved by as few as three members. It would also make it easier for the commission to be packed. Second, part of the commission title is planning. It is their role to make the first determination if projects meet both zoning and planning regulations. The commission is an important part of a system of checks and balances. This commission has done an excellent job and has protected many neighborhoods from intrusive development. At the very first board meeting of this administration, the mayor unsuccessfully tried to dump the members of this commission. He has frequently complained that it is anti-development. Failing to kill the commission, he is now trying to set up a way to bypass it. Finally, the mayor is now the acting head of the building department. He can approve development projects. Under his proposal, there will be no limitation on this pilot. He is a developer. He would be able to approve his own projects. This is a conflict of interest. Please do not allow this to happen. Please protect the Planning and Zoning Commission and their rightful role in the growth and development of Starkville. I thank you.
I wish I did have those powers. Thank you. Anyone else?
I'm Anita Henderson and I'm from Ward One. And I again ask you, please do not consider the proposed amendment tonight to adjust the planning and zoning when my representative or my Alderman is not present. We are one of the wards that has two people that, as a representative on this board. But the reason our second person got there was because the ward zones were changed and the ward six person got moved into Ward One. So therefore, we got two. And Mr. Perkins, Ward Six, had nobody. And also, I was, if you do continue to, and go ahead and hear this, I was one of the ones who spoke at the public hearing and it overwhelmingly said that there's nothing wrong with planning and zoning. They are there. They do a good job. They know what they're doing. I attend all the meetings. I know. But there's always at least two or three that cannot come because they do work. There is not a paid job. They are volunteers and appointed. And there are times that they are not able to come. And so as they said, there, you might have as few as three to four people making the final decisions over everything. And Ward Two does have two representatives right now, but only one votes because one of them's the chairman. So there's only two, one ward that has two people that are voting. Thank you very much. By the way, Mr. Davis, I understand, has missed two meetings in all the last four years. One was having the other baby and one was out working. So he is not, it's not like he misses very often.
Do we have anyone else that would like to have their three minutes?
I am Donna Stark and I am from Ward One as well. And I would ask that you not consider these projects with my Alderman out. I appreciate his voice in government and I would like to have him here to make a decision. Thank you.
Anyone else?
Hello. I'm Chris Cosper. I'm from Ward Five. I'm a member of Starkville in Motion. Starkville in Motion is a grassroots consensus-based organization, not so much from inclination as I think from necessity. When you advocate sidewalks, bike lanes, and trails, you have to develop consensus because when you try to connect points A through Z, it's important that everybody at B, C, D, and so forth are involved and committed to the overall project. You're going to hear a proposal tonight that on the face of it is going to offer a reasonable compromise for our University Drive bike lanes. What exists today is a reasonable compromise. It represents neither the best parallel parking nor the best bike lane situation, but balances the both of those. The bike lanes are a success. I was sitting at Ben 612 for lunch today and witnessed bike after bike passing. They're heavily used. They're an important asset to our community. I want everybody to think a second. If we substitute bike lanes and put the word road in its place, will we be open-minded to closing a road for a given period of time, anytime during the week? The bike lanes are part of the public way and an important asset to our community. If you approve this, you open a Pandora's Box that will allow any single group or organization along bike lane path, sidewalk, whatnot, to, to have a say in that public way that's really beyond what's appropriate for that particular, let's think of the greater whole here and the larger community. And that's what happened when this bike lane came through. That's my point on bike lanes. I would like to add one quick point on the public discussion on the municipal complex. In either 1997 or 1998, the architecture firm that I previously worked with was contracted to look at moving this court, the police station, and the SED offices to Walmart Number One, which is now Bulldog Lanes. That was in 1997 or 1998. So it's either, you know, getting on its eighth year or ninth year anniversary. As a community, we need to figure this out because I haven't heard anybody yet say, "We don't need a new police office. We don't need an improved court. We don't need a better City Hall." It's frankly embarrassing that we have worked so long on this and we can't come to any consensus. As a community, I'm speaking not to these folks, but more to everybody else. Why can't we get this project done? Why not? Why can't Starkville have top-notch facilities? I don't understand it. Thank you very much.
Would anyone else like to have their three minutes? I guess not. That brings us down to public appearances. And we have a presentation and request by Austin Waller here this evening to represent the Catholic Church for reinstating parking on University Drive.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I am not a member of a grassroots organization. I'm a member of St. Joseph Catholic Church, but we feel like we're legitimate citizens, too. I'm from Ward Four, Ward One, Mr. Davis's Ward. We are concerned that the full board is not here to make a vote on this. However, I'll go through our points. I think we're going to be interested to see what the priorities of the members of this board are. And we feel like what we have come forth with is a reasonable compromise. The compromise before you is to allow our church members 12 hours out of 168-hour week to go in and worship on Sundays. And all it's asking is to allow that area to exist as it did before this bike path was created. We have several members, Jeff Artigues, who is employed with our church, has gone and done a study and a survey and has determined there are a minimum of 20 families who are either, who are directly impacted by the lack of these parking places, either because of they're elderly, because they have young families, or because they're handicapped. And the proponents of the bike path and Starkville Motion, we believe that they're an important organization. But we don't think that an organization in a community of citizens that's supposed to work together should have the veto or express power over other citizens. We feel like we should have a voice as well. We also believe that a precedent has been set for these exceptions. This is an exception that we feel, we feel is reasonable. When the Arts Festival or Bulldog Bash, when those events are taking place, the bike path is not open. The bike paths are shut down during that time. So those, those things, and that, you know, the barriers have been up all the way down to the Catholic Church while that's going on. So we think that, you know, that's action that the board has deemed to take. We think that's reasonable. That's a legitimate reason. But we feel like our, our reason's legitimate, too. And, and just because one group, maybe louder, doesn't mean that the citizens that I represent are not concerned about this. And we would ask that the court take whichever, I mean, the board take whichever action it deems appropriate. And we'll just, we'll be interested to sit back and see what you all deem is appropriate.
Mr. Mayor, may I be recognized?
Yes, Mr. Vice Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Waller, just a couple of questions. Is your proposal to have this parking on the north side right in front of the church and along that north side as necessary and also to continue parking on the south side?
Yes, sir, it is. And the reason is this, Mr. Perkins. We have come before the board to ask for additional parking. The layout of our property does not allow for ingress and egress for our property for people with wheelchairs, for people with walkers, for people who are elderly, for people with physical limitations. So those parking spots were used by those individuals in our church originally. And when those were taken away, they had to find other means of ingress and egress from our property, which were not practical. The other concern is, we just have a lack of parking. And when that bike path was created, it took parking away from us. Not just those, that small number of places that we're asking for, but also parking that we used all along university. We haven't come before the board, in the spirit of compromise, we did not come before the board and say, "Hey, we want to shut down the whole bike path and we want all of these tens of parking places that we had lost as a result of the bike path." In the, in the spirit of compromise, we came forward and said, "We want these parking spots adjacent to church property, directly in front of the church." Thirteen spots. That's all we've asked for. 12 hours out of a week, not the entire week, 12 hours out of a week. And we believe that those bikers are smart enough to remember back before that bike path existed and to alter their route accordingly.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to be recognized for a motion. And since you've allowed me the opportunity to address the, the board this time, Mr. Mayor, I'd like to move that the St. Joseph Catholic Church be granted an exemption to park directly in front of its church each and every Sunday of the year commencing on Sunday, December 10, to 006 from 8:00 a.m. through 8:00 p.m. and that parking be allowed for the requested 12 to 13 spaces on the north side of the street. and that parking be allowed for the requested 12 to 13 spaces on the north side of the street in front of the church. And that this exemption also applies to the parking on the south side of the street and that the police department and the public service department and/or any other appropriate department shall install the necessary signs to inform the public and any others about this exemption to be authorized to the St. Joseph Catholic Church and that the police department will monitor this situation as and when needed and necessary.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Do we have a discussion amongst the aldermen regarding this motion?
Mr. Webb, if you had an opportunity to review this proposal?
Yes, sir.
And do you have any comments around the safety of this proposal? Of course, the center line has moved and it's no longer in the center. It has now been moved towards the north. Can this exemption be done safely?
It would require a crew out there every Saturday, Sunday morning to pull up somebody to put cones up to actually relocate the center line. If you don't do that, then you're going to require people going west. Not going to require, they're going to move over that center line in their attempt to go west on University Drive because of the people parking there. So you're basically going to move the center line over whether it physically is moved or not. Technically, you're going to have wheels of cars going west. It's going to be straddling that center line going that way. You have the potential for it on because if you take the parking off the north side, you have nine-foot travelway going west on the north side of University Drive. So the only way to do it properly would be to actually go out and set cones out down the new center line, move it over the difference between the east traffic lane and the west traffic lane.
Mr. Webb, with regard to your testimony here then, if we, with the motion directing the police department to grant any and all necessary assistance in terms of monitoring this, which you not agree with me, would that be sufficient to help alleviate any safety concerns?
If we shift the line, you're still going to have two poses of traffic going down the street now at whatever the speed limit is with 10 and 1/2 foot traffic going the same. We don't recommend anything less than 11, we try to get 12. Now, the police chief is going to be heavily involved in this. You might want to ask him about it, but technically, we'd have to have some, you know... No, you'd have to have some signage saying "lane shifts" or some way to let people know that they've got their bike by the cones rather than the center line.
So that's what I'm saying. We put the necessary signs, this is part of the motion. We get the signs that we want to warn the public. Basically, I'm of the opinion, Mr. Webb, and just want, as we kind of digress to this situation, that, you know, these are sunny worshippers and we're just talking about 12 hours out of a year. And I'm trying to accommodate this situation. But if we get the signs up there and warn the motorists of this and have the cones out there, is that still going to be a problem?
I would think that it would be doable. I would also suggest that we lower the speed limit to that safer speed for 10 and 1/2 foot travelway.
So we can lower the speed limit, we can put the cones, put the signs in, it'll work, correct? Am I right?
Yes, sir.
Okay, that's correct. So that alleviates the safety issue. What's next?
Bill, if we move the center line, could we not have more width in both lanes? And if parking is allowed on both sides and we split the difference for traffic, what would the lane widths be then?
Well, it would be, it would be less on the south side when you have the bike lanes and it would be equal distance when you have the parking on both sides. You're going to have two different situations going on on the north side. One, seven, six days out of the week, you're going to have a bike path. You'd have a 14-foot possibly of travelway. 10 and 1/2 on the south side and if you, the other part of it, you'd have 10 and 1/2, 10 and 1/2. You've got a variable there that you can't, you can't just slide the center line over.
My question would be, if you're sunny, parking on both sides and we split the difference, what would that allow the one end to be as far as traffic?
10 and 1/2.
On both sides.
Just during the Sunday, parking on both sides. Bear in mind, you don't have a bike path on the north side. But when you do, on Saturday, you're going to have a bike path on the north side so you'd have a 15 and 1/2 foot travelway and a 10 and 1/2 on the other side.
Whatever's the pleasure, the board, we're working out. We'll do the best we can to ensure public safety whenever y'all are requesting it.
We have a motion and a second on the floor. Let this be worked out. Do we have further discussion?
Let's have some additional comments. Mr. Mayor and Board, given the items we've got on the agenda tonight, I'm reminded of the true story that happened some time ago during my earlier days with the city. There was a particularly contentious issue in front of the board. The mayor called the vote. He called for the "yes" and the aldermen raised their hand. And Alderman so-and-so raised his hand. He called for the "noes." Alderman so-and-so raised his hand. And it was pointed out to him that, well, you can't vote both ways. You got to pick one or the other. And he said, "But I feel strongly about both sides of the issue." So I have some very, very mixed feelings tonight with regard to this particular thing.
And certainly what I recall is the woman who spoke in front of us several weeks ago. And she was hit on a street that didn't provide for safe biking. And this is a public right of way. This is a public street and we're responsible for public safety. And while I'd like to accommodate any and all requests that we have, I'm not willing to go back on a commitment that we made to safe walking and biking in our community. And I appreciate what you're saying, that you'd like to hear what the priorities are of this board. And I want to be very clear what my priority is. And that's safe walking, safe biking and safe driving in our community. This is a strong statement that we've made here in Starkville. And I'm not willing to go back on that. And I'm certainly not willing to make an unsafe situation for our community.
Mr. Mayor, I'm very committed in supporting this motion. I think, as the chief of police said, that whatever we pass, they can make walk out. These are worshippers talking about trying to find a place to park to go into their house or place of worship. Throughout this city on Sundays, there are streets that may be very narrow that we cannot get down. And if you think about all across town where motorists and church attendees park all along the street, you barely can get down the street. So hopefully that we'll get a majority vote to simply support the request for the worshippers wanting to be able to park for 12 hours a week. That's nothing unreasonable. Now, the bikers, there are other alternatives. You know, we have to sacrifice in this world. We have to give and take some. There are other alternative routes. We're not talking about 168 hours a week, just 12. Please support the desire of these worshippers trying to park somewhere that is close and safe so they can have quick access into their place of worship. Please support the motion.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, ma'am.
I would just like to say, I too support safe driving, safe biking, safe walking. But safety also lies within the person that's driving, biking and walking. Thank you.
Anyone else to make a comment this time?
Mr. Mayor, would it be appropriate if I said something to that?
Uh, I suppose.
As far as the center line goes, it's not the Great Wall of China. And if you go up Main Street, Lampkin Street on any Sunday, I defy any citizen to say they don't cross the double yellow line because they're forced to, because of the parking situation, because of cars jutting out. And I think it's a little disingenuous to protect this bike path to come up and say, "All of a sudden, oh, we need to respect these double yellow lines for the sake of our citizens." I think it's silly, to be honest with you, because every citizen throughout this town, I can't tell you how many complaints I've had about people just because of the bike path as it exists right now, complain about going through the maze that is University Drive, having to cross that double yellow line and dodge that bike path. So I don't think the, I think the safety issue is a red herring to try to save, to try to prevent our church members from entering the church as they had been before this bike path was done for 12 hours out of 168-hour week. And we think that's just an unfair position for them to take.
Thank you.
Mayor, let me just say that I am more than willing to work with the church on this issue. Although I do disagree with this particular course of action. I am not convinced that it won't be an issue of safety. But also, I am worried about opening the floodgates of other exceptions that will essentially erode the quality of any future bike lanes we may want to put down. And I think that avoiding problems like this was the reason that Starkville in Motion went to door-to-door and went to every business on that road. We talked to just about every, I believe, every business that was on that road before they made that proposal to us a year ago.
And our concerns were expressed.
Any other comments or statements? We have a motion and a second. You've heard various opinions here. All those in favor of the motion, please raise your hand. All those opposed to the motion, raise your hands. Looks like I'm at another time opposed to the motion. Everybody fails.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make an additional motion, however. One of the things that, Austin, you talked about previously was providing greater access for some of the people who attend the church who may need a special assistance, especially to be closer to the front door. And I'd make a motion that at our next opportunity when we resurface University Drive, we relocate the parking from the current south side to the north side, which would provide greater access and convenience for the church. It seems a reasonable compromise.
The passage of time. We have shared your joy at the birth of your children and proudly we have watched them grow. We've taken care of your health care needs during the good times and the not-so-good. Your parents and grandparents have depended upon us. Together, we have shared the struggles and the wonders of life. At Oktobahaw County Hospital, we are celebrating 30 years of being your lifelong choice in health care.
To the north side, is that basically the way you understood that bill? At the next overlay. Mr. Perkins, did you wish to say something?
Yes, sir. I was going to ask the gentleman from Ward Five about when do we anticipate next overlay? I know we're having all these streets in years. So I was trying to find out, we anticipate, so the church will have some, a reasonable expectation about what is going to happen.
This is, once we get done tonight, this will be project number one from the infrastructure committee. And we have funds available in the budget to do this. So we'll be up to the board and hopefully that means soon. But I can assure you, University Drive is not the only street that needs the overlay and there's a whole bunch more voices that are saying we need to get on with this.
Mr. Mayor, a couple of comments. Mr. Webb, refresh me, I don't have the street priority list. I don't recall University Drive being on there.
I don't either.
Right, which is something that will be, need to be taken in mind. And by way of two other comments along the lines of the infrastructure needs which Mr. Stark talked about and so forth, I will be proposing tonight the establishment of a work session very, very quickly to deal with a variety of infrastructure issues for presentation and perhaps action at the second meeting in December. And so I hope we'll be able to schedule a work session tonight that will fit most everybody's schedule. And finally, the comment I would make, there's been a little bit of an implication that however votes went tonight, both from the church's point of view and perhaps even from Mr. Cox's point of view, that it's showing lack of support for biking and walking and so forth. I would remind everybody that the present grant application for significant trails, biking, so forth, that Starkville in Motion and particularly individuals, the committee chair from Starkville in Motion works so very hard on. And what many people do not know, the intensive amount of informal lobbying that has gone on with the decision makers in that particular situation. And it is my information that we may very well be getting a nice report that we will want to hear very, very soon from the decision makers on that thing. So I would say, no vote of any board member should be interpreted as for something, against something, anything of this sort. This community will have to exist in a spirit of compromise on virtually everything we do. And we've got to keep that in mind.
Does that mean you second his motion?
Oh, I second.
Okay.
Mr. Waller, I'm going to vote against his motion because there's no indication when it's going to come up I support the church.
All right, we have a motion on the floor, it's been seconded, that when we overlay University Drive is that we move the parking from the south side to the parking on the north side and be more accommodating to the church. All those in favor of the motion, please raise your hand. All those oppose?
I'm voting present.
Okay. It passes. Thank you, sir. It brings us down to the mayor's business. And we've had the items G and H from the board's business moved up to this slot. And Mr. Mills, I think it would be appropriate if we had a, you start the discussion, if you would, with your two particular items, that would be items G and H. Can I give you that opportunity? They might want to hear what you've got to say.
My proposal, after we had some discussion about it, I had a...
Do you want some water?
A proposal to make the Mills South property, being the Mills South building, remodeled, as you would say, made into a city hall. It's got ample room, twice the space that we've got right now. After we make these modifications, move the city hall to the Mills South building, then we would make a proposal to remodel, you can say renovate, the east side of this building and put the police department in it, which would have ample room, could be very attractive. At the same time, we would have the courtroom on the west side of this building and entrance to the west side to the courtroom, completely separated from the police department. I looked at this, talked to people, and we've got some people that give me great input of what the square footage could be and would be and what approximately cost could be. Now, I've been questioned by Mr. McLaurin where I got the figures, where I've got mine. I could question anybody else's decision of where you get figures. I think you get figures where you want to... Answering the question, the gentleman was up here a while ago, said he was tired of hearing this from time to time and couldn't understand why we couldn't come to a conclusion on doing something. Well, we've got part of the board that want to spend money while. We've got another part of the board members that want to get what we can. Nice offices, nice buildings for what we can pay for. And it's very simply, if any family that's bringing home $500 a week cannot afford a $1,500 house payment. So what you do, you look at how much money you're making and then you buy a car. And I'm saying that, I made a proposal, I think probably each one of you read the article in the Starkville Daily News. From quarter till seven last Sunday morning till around 10:30, I got... From quarter till seven last Sunday morning till around 10:30, I got 71 calls, negative, positive about what I had to say about my proposal. I'm not saying that my proposal is any better than anybody else. I'm just saying that it is an option that we could look at, and I highly recommend that before we make any move, to move forward with this, um, proposal, that the board, that we give the people a, um, right to vote on a binding referendum on this bond, and let them make a decision of where you want option A or where you want option B. And then that is final.
Could you tell us a little bit about option A and option B?
Option, option A would be, basically, on what resolution you have intent of, uh, moving forward with this evening. And my option is to, um, put the city hall in the Millsap Building. Not tear it down, move it in there, and that can be done. Uh, the courtroom be extended from where it is to the front of the building, would give them ample room. The judge himself has said that he would be perfectly satisfied with that. We can move the police department over on the east side of this building. Uh, I went through and looked at it last week. We've got two floors. It is ample room. Uh, I've worked hard on this. I've worked, uh, for the last two days calling other cities in the state of Mississippi, uh, somewhere around the same size within 5,000 to 10,000 population. And, um, it's hard to come to a conclusion because some of the police departments, like Biloxi, has got, in their police department, a 68,000 square feet. That happens to be the jail and a warehouse and a police department.
I think they made a mistake, and they forgot to count the fourth floor of that building and called back up here and saying that someone had called, and actually, it's 82,000 square feet that Biloxi has.
But so many times that we have taken buildings and moved a police department in a warehouse or a vacant building, and we, the police department just inherited such a tremendous amount of space, which they don't use. I had the opportunity to look in the back of this building, where I well remember, most people here don't, when it used to be a stage back there and a firing range across the back of this building. And, uh, it was unbelievable, the space back there, there's just piles and piles and piles of cardboard boxes, and I have my doubts if anybody knows what's in those boxes. It was 15 or 20 bicycles. Uh, I don't know how long these bicycles have been back there, but I, I don't know of any provision that, uh, we give a police department jurisdiction over a bicycle indefinitely. I think after a certain period of time, if we don't do anything else, we could give them to a charity organization where they can be put to use, and it don't take up the space that we are using, using here. So, all I'm asking is, let's use a common sense approach and try to have three nice facilities for amount of money that we feel like we can afford.
Now, Jim, I think in the paper you mentioned some monies. Can you re, reemphasize the kind of monies you feel like that could be used to, for these particular purposes?
Yeah, I feel like it, and, uh, this goes back to what I just said. I think we could renovate, remodel, or whatever you want to call it. What I'm talking about is moving the, uh, police, uh, the city hall down in the Millsap Building. I don't have the figures here in front of me, I didn't know the, uh, mayor was going to try to embarrass me trying to find these figures. But a total of doing three options would be somewhere around $4.8 million. And I think you can get a lot of work done, you can get a lot of building, and you can get a lot of pretty nice building for $4.8 million.
Mayor, you were suggesting that we renovate this entire area here, plus do the city hall and the Millsaps Building. Uh, do you mind if I ask Mr. Schaefer what he feels like the cost of renovating this building might cost, and some technical issues that you would run into in renovating this building?
Well, we've heard the technical. I don't have any, uh, problem with it, I just don't want to hear the same thing, we've been here a year and a half about what it's gonna cost. I heard the other day about if we renovate, we're gonna get into some compliance codes and all of this. But I think we can go out here and we can, uh, come up with any kind of excuse not to do something, as well as we can come up with excuses, let's move forward and do something.
With your permission, could I ask him to say, interject any figures here that do this?
You certainly can.
Okay. Mr. Schaefer, do you have any comments in regards, say, cost of renovating, uh, uh, this facility? And I think it has approximately 26,000 square feet, counting the garage in the back and, and other areas here.
I do. Uh, Mr. Mills, I did have an opportunity to, uh, I was there when you presented your work at the working session, and I have since had an opportunity to review the, uh, the work. And, uh, the, the thing that is, uh, critical to understand is that all of us have to operate under the IBC, International Building Code. It is the code that is accepted by the city of Starkville. We are required, as architects and engineers, to follow that code, and it is not something that a city government has say over, over the, uh, the National Building Code. So, the, the two things that are not in your calculations are the required bit bringing this building up to code. When you say renovate, that is absolutely dictated by the code as to what you have to do. It's not our opinion, it is a requirement. So, the two parts that I believe were not in your $4.8 million estimate was what it would require to build, bring this building up to code, and what it would be required to meet program. We have had the program written for the court and for the police. The board, I believe, has unanimously supported the program, so that square footage is 36,000 square feet. If we assume this building has 26,000 square feet, it would require an additional 10,000 square feet of new construction to get this to meet the program. So, if we're looking at an apples-to-apples situation, in other words, a police facility that we had estimated at 5.3 million on the Millsap site, to put that police facility and the court into this building and to accept the 3.3 million that you had for the city hall, that would actually put this project at $8 million.
Okay, can you add, what is your definition between renovation and remodeling?
Good question. It is not my definition. It is defined clearly in an International Building Code. Whenever you start to do anything beyond finishes, so as soon as you start to move walls, you start to move any interior partitions, you would then be required, and they have it graded, a little bit of moving is one grade, uh, more moving is another grade, defined by the code. But this would, the amount of wall moving to get this to a police and court, would require full, uh, meeting of the life safety code, the fire code, plumbing code, the America's Disability Code Act, and of course, we would probably lose the parking that we're currently using for, uh, the police cars. If we had to expand this building, I don't know where we would have our secure parking. That would potentially require us to put parking below and build a building above that, which would certainly increase the cost of adding to this building. And again, this is not the Gary Schaefer code, this is the International Building Code,
There were comments earlier this evening that they had not heard the proposals, I believe you were here three meetings ago, four meetings ago, in which we, uh, did a cost savings analysis on the present location of the Millsap site, did we not?
Yes.
And, uh, and did we not arrive at a figure of 5.2, 3 million for just the police facility? And I believe that proposal that we had also decided to keep the courts in this particular facility. So that would strictly be, uh, for the construction of the police facility at the present location of the Millsaps, uh, site. We did have some, uh, appropriate monies in there for minor, uh, renovations of this facility to, to accommodate the courts, I believe, uh, that we were considering. Is that not correct at the time? And you gave a full detail, uh, of the site, the preparation and the construction at that time, with some, uh, reductions, uh, in size, slight size, foyer and other areas as such like that. Is that not correct?
Correct.
That, uh, back to Mr. Mills's, uh, proposal, uh, did you have any other questions of him, or?
I just had a clarification, and, and there are a lot of questions about the 5.9 million proposal that weren't answered before, and I, I expect there to be a presentation tonight that will answer some of those. But are you saying that in this 5.9 million presentation, that we'll be able to build the program as it relates to the courts in the existing city hall?
No, no, this would be just strictly, I think a better term would be to spruce up these facilities. This, this would not meet the programmatic requirements at all for the court.
But the cost estimates you just gave from Mr. Mills were about, you said it wouldn't be apples to oranges, and then that you would have to meet the program, and therefore you gave an 8 million figure, and, and I, to be fair, that sounds a bit misleading if the 5.9 million proposal doesn't meet the program either.
Right. I thought it was clear the 5.9 was only for the police and then to spruce up the court.
And since it wasn't discussed at the last meeting, so this proposal does not provide for the program needs that this board voted on unanimously, if I remember you saying. Um, as part of your recollection, it's mine as well. So it doesn't meet the court's needs.
No.
Um, and so, you also mentioned that if we moved any walls in this building, that it would be considered a renovation.
That's right.
So are we not also gonna expand this courtroom to provide for the much-needed space for our courts?
No. No.
Well, answer this question. I had an architectural consultant firm told me, if we give you, you give us a size of the frame of this building, say 60 feet wide and 200 feet long, and you tell us you want to put 40 offices in it, but we don't, we're gonna spend a half a million dollars, that can be done. Now, I, I have a problem with, um, you saying one thing because of a different organization's requirements, and then another architectural consultant firm say, we can do what you ask us to do, and we can spend what you tell us you're gonna spend. So that's confusing to me. And if you can explain that to me, we'll proceed.
I have no ability to explain another architectural
So we don't have an answer. We need to do some more consultants on this, get some more opinion, so whereby, whereby we can come up with what we're saying, two options, put it on a referendum and let the people vote for A, option, or B, option. Thank you, Mayor, just, that's all I got to say.
The other resolution that we have on here is pertaining to the 5.9 million. The cost, the proposed cost of a new police facility, police facility, has been worked on, and I think we've had approximately $900,000, uh, cost reduction by not finding asbestos, demolition, and other things like that in which the pencil was put to.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes?
Am I correct that that resolution that you're referring to was not included in the board's packet that was available for us as of Friday?
Uh, that had the board's, uh, the resolution was not included in the packet Friday, no it was not.
Yes, sir. Mr. Mayor, my first time seeing this resolution, I had to ask the gentleman from Fire was the resolution, I had my papers, it was on the table when I got here, and I'm gonna get recognition laid on for some more, uh, discussion, but it, it is very disturbing that when I get here to this board meeting, I'm asked to vote on the question as to whether or not we should issue 5.3 million or 5.9 million dollars in bonds, and have not had an opportunity to see the resolution.
I see.
What kind of business is that? There's no kind of business at all. So, um, matter of fact, I, I am not familiar with the plan that we're talking about, hadn't seen any plans, hadn't heard Mr. Schaefer's presentation, but yet there's a rush to judgment to vote on this thing tonight. I mean, give us an opportunity to represent our constituents. I haven't read this thing, I don't know what it says.
Mr. Perkins, we've had in previous meetings that we've had
Are you gonna allow me to finish speaking?
I'm gonna let you finish, yes, sir, then I'm gonna answer you.
Yes, sir. No, no problem, I'm gonna yell a floor and I'm gonna talk as long as I need to. But, but, and, and since I have the floor, is, I have not seen this, this resolution. They want us to vote on the question of 5.3 or 5, whatever this thing says, I, I haven't seen it. But let me make the record clear, you know, I support Chief Linnley, he's done a great job, as a matter of fact, he was captain before I came, uh, before he made, uh, the chief and, uh, support the police department. But this is nothing directly, uh, with regard to Chief Linnley, this is a matter down to dollars and cents. The board is pushing to, to have a vote tonight as to whether or not these bonds should be issued without the people voting on it. Haven't had an opportunity to read it, and they don't want me to read it. Haven't seen it, don't know what it says, hadn't seen the first plan, want me to vote tonight, want me to go on record voting for this. Now, and when I get finished, I'm gonna announce to the chair that I yield. So, uh, on July 5, 2006, I offered a motion. The motion passed unanimously, calling for an election on the question as to whether or not up to $9 million in bonds should be issued for a municipal justice complex. That matter was put to the voters on the 26th day of September 2006, on a, on a Tuesday. The good citizens of, of this fine city that we live in went to the polls to vote and voted not to authorize the issuance of bonds for municipal justice complex. Now, I've heard some of the members sitting at this table say, well, a majority has authorized the issuance of the bonds. Well, my understanding of, of the law is that, that there is nothing in the law that says a majority can authorize the issuance of the bond. Now, stand me corrected if somebody want to correct me. My understanding of the law is that an affirmative vote of 60% or more has to authorize the issuance of the bonds. So if it fails, it fails. Now, it got 50, it got less than 60%, if you got 59.9, 59.9 does not equal to 60 no day of the week. Now, the people have already spoken on this matter. You heard Mr. Gibson, a distinguished colleague that I worked with during my first term on the board from 1993, 1997, he said that the people want to be heard. Mr. Stark raised questions about the money, Mr., Dr. Cole raised questions about the money, but let's travel on down, I got more time I want to spend on this. But back on March the 7 of 2006, I offered a motion, ladies and gentlemen, before this board, and it passed on a four to three vote. And this motion was to give the citizens of Starkville an opportunity to And this motion was to give the citizens of Starkville an opportunity to go to the polls to vote on the issue of size, location and configuration. 4 to 3 vote. What happens? On the 15th day of March of 2006, we get a veto from the current mayor. And one of the things that is contained in the veto message is, "I, along with a majority of the citizens, think that the Millsap location is the best location." When did they decide it? Because nobody want to give them the right to vote. Do not want to give them the right to vote. What we are hearing here tonight is an attempt to silence the voice of the people. This is an attempt to deny the people the right to be heard. The people have given a mandate that they did not want those bonds to be issued. If this board wants bonds to be issued, then we need to put that matter back on the ballot. Now, let's talk about the issuance of bond. There are a lot of city needs here. You know, we just heard from the St. Joseph Catholic Church here, and over there, that street is not even included on that, on the overlay of list that we have. So we have a lot of infrastructure needs here in the city. We have at least $2.5 million in needs to overlay streets. We used to overlay streets all the time, but for some reason, it's no longer a priority. I guess they don't think we need to ride on good streets here. I hear it all the time. We have at least $2 million in needs for water and fire protection needs. We need about a million dollars to get the appropriate fire protection out there to the, on the Reed Road and the Highway 25 bypass for a new development. We need another million dollars for, out to the bypass on 389 and, and the 82 bypass. We need at least a million dollars or more for, or 2 million or more for sewage and drainage. We have all kind of infrastructure needs. You have heard from our distinguished former city attorney, who was with this board in October of 1998, when we almost doubled the size of the city. And this, this board at that time passed a resolution that was approved by the district court of this county and the United States Department of Justice that contains language that the city of Starkville has to provide these basic city services within five years. Thus, in the resolution, I voted on it. I read it. It went to the court, it went to the Justice Department. What has the city done? Nothing. You know, and then there's something on the agenda tonight to, to take in an area outside to say, "We know, we want to do all these things, but except for the things that we should be doing." You know, we, we need to take care of the taxpayers' money. We are the guardian of the taxpayers' purse. Now, if the majority is serious about this tonight, if, if there are four people at this table that is really serious about this, what we would really need to do is come up with a great course and plan of action. And with that course and plan of action, we get one bond issue, lay out the, put the Justice Department, put the justice complex, put the police department, we can put the municipal court, we can put the, all these infrastructure needs, the streets, the sewer, the sanitation. Let's put all that on the ballot. And let our good citizens here in our fine city vote on it. Are we afraid of an election? Why should we? We know we should be leaders to accept whatever the outcome is. I'm not afraid of an election. I've gone through four elections here as an alderman. I've gone through election as a, for, for state house representative. I've gone through an election for, for circuit court judge. I am not afraid of election because I believe in democracy. And I'm glad this is a country that's founded upon the principles of democracy. And here again tonight, we want to go ahead and vote on this matter in the absence of my colleague. And that's degrading. It was degrading to me when I was out. And I'm not going to be a part of that same level and process in, in, in great respect to my colleague from Ward 1. That was wrong when I was out. Here, I was out for an unavoidable illness. Yet it didn't matter with him, didn't care with him, but I care about my colleague from Ward 1. We have heard the, the citizens and registered voters from Ward 1 tonight who say that they want to be heard. Their alderman is out. They want representation. They're being denied the voice and the right to vote. And Ward 1 had a very close vote on this bond issue. And when they went to the polls, there was 563 people from Ward 1 that voted. 286 voted for on September 26, 2006, and 277 voted against. And you think that, that we need to go for without their having a voice tonight? Only difference of nine votes, 51% for and 49% against. And even in my ward, there was not a 60% vote. 56% for, 44% against, 141 for in my ward, 110 against. Now, I am in favor of letting this matter go out to the people. And whatever the people decide, I am going to accept it because I believe in good democracy. I want the people to have a direct voice, direct involvement and direct input in this process. This matter has been going on a long time. The gentleman mentioned tonight, yes, we had a lot of opportunities to, to, to have a justice complex, but at the same time, the people have expressed a willingness. And I am in favor of the people being heard, and we do not need to pass any motion, in particular one I haven't read, had not an opportunity to read, but we should not veto the voice of the people. And Mr. Mayor, I yield the floor, and thank you for recognizing me.
Uh, Mr. Perkins, we did have a presentation on this issue. I don't think you were here that night. It may have been election night.
Are we going to have a presentation on this 5.9 million dollar bond?
I think we had a presentation about three weeks ago on it.
Okay. A simple question...
And you asked some of the same questions then that you've asked tonight, if I remember correctly. Is that not right, Mr. Shaffer, about the intent of what the money was?
Couple of simple questions that I'm sure you all have answers for. And I'm looking at you, but this isn't your question, Mr. Shaffer. It'll be for the gentleman beside me. How much will our taxes go up if we issue these bonds? And I imagine that's a pretty simple question.
Do what?
How much will our taxes go up if we issue these bonds?
Uh, it would be not quite half of what the previous tax increase was, which, Mr. McLaurin, help me here just a moment. Something is usually the ones that has all that information at hand. I believe on a household, it was going to be like a, with a, a tax-exempt situation of one person, it was about a dollar a month. This would probably be about 60 to 75 cents. On commercial properties, it would be a little bit more than that, but it would not be a significant amount compared to what the first one would, would have been.
What will our taxes, can I have a floor?
Pardon me?
Can I have a floor?
I didn't, I didn't understand.
I have a floor. You better get your hearing aid.
I may have to borrow yours.
Yeah, I want to have a floor.
Oh, excuse me. I didn't hear that. I thought you said something about floor. Go ahead.
Mr. Mills, I just had a couple of questions.
Yeah, go ahead.
They're simple, and it doesn't sound like we have a real good understanding of the increase on taxes. Do we have an understanding of the, the term of what we're, the length of term that we're going to borrow these for, what the rate is, how much the total cost of the program will be?
The term would probably be in the neighborhood of 20 years.
Mr. Mayor, you say probably. Do I have any specific information? Probably, maybe, guess?
20 years, and I would say the rate at this particular time would be in the neighborhood of approximately, and because that has to be bid, of around 4%, meaning that long-term bond rates by the government closed at 4.43%, and I'm sure municipal rates would be in the low percentile of 4% or if not in the 3.95 percentile.
Mr. Mayor, do we have any definite, specific, exact figures tonight?
Not in regard to bond rates, because you don't get those till you send them out and you get a bid on it.
And do you have any specific, exact figures as to how much the tax is going to go up?
I think I said that it would be approximately 60% of what the previous suggestion was for taxes.
Do you have anything definite?
Uh, as far as the specific tax?
Yes, sir.
No. Not knowing what the bond interest rate would be would help to determine part of that.
Just another quick question, Mr. Shaffer. You may be able to answer this. I know we're moving parts of the program out of the original building that was going to be built on the site at Jackson and Lampton to the Millsaps building, and so now we have two buildings that will serve the function of the police station. Will this preclude in any way us proceeding with a transit hub in that Millsaps building?
I don't see. It's just a small amount of area, primarily storage and car wash.
And isn't our exercise facility going over there as well?
Yes.
Okay.
Is the acquisition cost of, we still got to acquire the bus station out of, Mr. Mayor, that, that coin a lot. We still plan to...
That doesn't have anything to do with this. That's totally separate. At this time, we'll take a five-minute recess.
The passage of time. We have shared your joy at the birth of your children, and proudly, we have watched them grow. We've taken care of your health care needs during the good times and the not-so-good. Your parents and grandparents have depended upon us. Together, we have shared the struggles and the wonders of life. At Oktobahaw County Hospital, we are celebrating 30 years of being your lifelong choice in health care.
Some questions were raised before we took a break in regard to what this cost is going to be, and I believe I made a statement in regard to the 20-year issuance of bonds, that it's really very difficult to say, put a pinpoint cost on this due to the fact that these bonds are bidded on and they fluctuate in the current market. And you can have as much as a quarter percent to change your figures in your bid. Right now, bonds are very low, and as I pointed out, perhaps in the 3.95 percentile. When these figures were figured, they were figured, I think the bonding suggestion at the time was four and a quarter. Is that right, Mr. McLaurin?
Something like that.
Uh, we were talking about in the old proposal of 9.3 million, approximately an increase of 4.3 meals. In the current proposal of building just the police facility and doing a bonding indebtedness, it would be approximately a three-meal increase, so only about 2/3 of what is there. With a house that is, has an appraised value of $75,000, with homestead exemption, there would be no increase at all in the taxes. In a non-homestead exemption situation, it'd be a tax increase of about $9 a year. And if you take that figure down to $100,000 with homestead exemption, it would be approximately $41 a year. If it's non-homestead, it would be approximately, uh, uh, $287 a year versus 272 for non-hom- for jumping up to a $200,000 homestead exemption, the tax increase from the point 16.15 to 19.5. 19.5 would be $233 a year as opposed to the $173 a year. That's approximately $50 a year increase, which is approximately $4.10 a month on a $200,000 house. If you're 65 years or older, and you have a double tax exemption on a $100,000 house, under the old proposal, it would be $4 a month. If you took approximately 2/3 of that, it would be in the neighborhood of around 3 or around $2 and something a cent. Now, again, Mr. Perkins, we had a presentation of this very issue done about three meetings ago, in which we went through and we looked at cutting the size, we cut the cost, and we felt like that we needed to provide our police with a police facility. Understand your concerns. Would like to also say that we adjusted and looked at using the current building that we're in now for the courts with some moderate, appropriate cosmetic renovation to keep the courts in this particular facility. The 5.3 million that we cut from 6.2 million included the land of the current site of the Millsaps site. This is not anything that we have not talked about. We have talked about this, and we are looking at this. It's really interesting. We sit up here, we raise a roof over a 5.9 million dollar thing, but if you look at your agenda here, we have another issue here, 5.3 million that nobody's even said anything about.
Mr. Mayor, I'm consistent on my voting on bond issues.
Do we have any other questions pertaining to the issuance of 5.9 million dollars? Usually, you give yourself a little cushion in regard to this so that if you have any surprises, you're able to take care of them.
Just a couple of clarifications. The bond resolution that was presented on the table tonight talks about raising money for the purposes of erecting police station and jails, and I just wanted to get a clarification of what jails means here because we've apparently not talked about jails, but that there may be a bond reason for that.
There's no bond reason. When the attorney drafted the initial resolution up to $9 million, and I had to advise or send word to him that that was not the correct language to put in there, and so he went back and amended jails out. So obviously, it wasn't proved well enough to get it out of there unless there's something I'm not aware of. But yet, if it passed, it's going to have jails in there.
No.
No.
Oh, Mr. Mayor and Board, in thinking ahead that if this were going to be voted on, and if it is going to be voted on, I've read very carefully through this, this resolution, which was sent to us, Almond Perkins, by email, as, as well as placed on the table tonight, and have a number of minor changes to the resolution to conform to what is being talked about. And I have highlighted those changes very, very specifically. And of course, if this thing is going to be voted on, then we will read the entire thing also. Almond Cox and Perkins, here's a copy.
Paul McLaurin, Mr. Mayor may be recognized.
You may be recognized as long as you don't carry it out too long.
I don't put no limit on my, on my guilt to represent my constituents, but, but Mr. Mayor and my colleagues, you know, again, this is, this is just poor government here. Here, I could, you know, get an amendment, hadn't seen it, want me, still want me to vote on it. I mean, where do we stop it? I mean, is it unreasonable for it to give me another meeting so I can read this? Is it reasonable to allow me an opportunity to, to see the plan? I mean, there's no reasonableness with it. It's just an opportunity to shove this down my throat and down the throats of the other citizen. That's what it all boils down to. They just put in plain, common, simple, laypeople's language, just to want to shove this resolution, this vote down my throat, and CPR won't save me. I yield the floor.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, ma'am.
I just have a couple of things I'd like to say. First of all, why did we have the hearings and the work session? Because evidently, we didn't hear a thing and we didn't work out anything. Second, where were all these suggestions on what we can do, should do before now? I never received any phone call about what we need to do instead of what we were talking about doing. I did not receive any until yesterday. And why did we have a referendum? If we didn't know what we were going to do, how we were going to do it, when we were going to do it, where we were going to do it, then why did we, we talking about our citizens, the citizens, the citizens? Then why did we waste up the citizens' money and the citizens' time having a referendum on something that evidently we don't know anything about? So all of us are to blame. We can stop pointing fingers, we can stop shouting at each other, stop trying to tear each other down because this is representing us, the board, and we are speaking for the citizens of Starkville. And right now, I don't hear us saying anything. Thank you.
Anyone else?
Someone can answer my question about, are we building a jail with this or not?
No, a jail has never been mentioned in my hearing.
Okay, well, in the document that was presented tonight, it talks about issuing bonds to build a police station and a jail. And I don't, I can't imagine in what bizarre world that is a question that shouldn't be answered tonight.
There really is, in terms of this, no question. That's fairly standard language that is used in things of this sort. But my recommendation is that the word jails be stricken because we're not talking about any jails.
Mr. Faver?
All the same existing municipal buildings be stricken as well.
No, that's added.
Mr. Faver, I'm not a bond attorney, don't practice dealing with bonds, but I'm just asking you this, leading course on... you this legal question, I know you don't practice with bonds, but let me ask you this question, if you can, you know, feel that you, the legal can answer this question, but is it legal for the Board to take action on this bond issue after the Board authorized the referendum and the matter was legally voted down by the voters and did not achieve the affirmative 6% vote? Can, if you give a yes and no answer, what's your authority on it?
Well, as you say, I'm not the bond attorney on this issue. I haven't been asked rendering opinions on this issue. It seems to me that the issue that was presented to the people is different than the issue, the resolution that's before us today. Now, I've spoken to the bond, I'm sorry, I didn't mean to interrupt you, you won't, go ahead.
Okay, now, to make sure, now, when you give me your answer, I make sure that you can stand behind your advice. Now, you...
I'm not giving you an advice. I'm telling you, I'm not the bond attorney. What I was going to say was, I've spoken to the bond attorney regarding whether or not there was any impediment he felt to this resolution being brought forward tonight. He advised me there was not. Now, I'm just telling you what I spoke to him this afternoon, because I wanted to be able to answer a question if it was presented to me, but that's what he said, and I asked him. I didn't specifically ask him the question that you asked me, Almond Perkins, but he gave me his cell phone number, and I certainly can call him if I need to. But I specifically called him this afternoon to ask that, if there, and my question was, is there anything that would prevent the Board from considering and voting on this resolution as he prepared, not me? And he told me that his feeling that there was not.
Mr. Faber, so you haven't reviewed this and aren't able to offer us any advice and counsel on this document?
I've not, I've not seen this document. If this is a new document, I haven't seen it. If it's the one that was presented before regarding the $9 million and some changes, but I haven't seen this particular 5.9 million.
So the one that's before the Board tonight, you've never seen it before tonight?
No, I hadn't seen it before tonight.
And is our bond counsel here tonight?
No, he's not here.
So, really, if you hadn't seen it, you can't give us any legal advice on it, correct?
I wouldn't be giving you legal advice regarding the bond itself.
But you can't give us any legal advice on this document here if you hadn't read it, correct?
I read it tonight when it was, I read it tonight. But as I say, I did call the bond counsel this afternoon to ask him, because he's the one that prepared this resolution, I didn't.
Other questions?
The only statement, we're talking about jail, and it says therefore, we're repairing, improving, and adjoining the equipment, equipping the same, and constructing, improving, and paving streets, sidewalks, public parking, facilities, and purchasing land. Is this all within the frame of 5.9 million dollars? Do all of this?
Yes.
But I think we need to know what specifically each one of these character of what's gonna be spent.
I believe in the presentation...
Who makes the decision of what we're gonna spend on what, and how much?
I believe in the presentation, three weeks ago, that some of these issues were brought up at the particular time. I noticed that the resolution for the Parks and Rec has basically some of the same similar language in here, and I've not heard anyone ask questions at the time that they made their presentations, which specific items, is this money's gonna be spent on as such? Not so much for roads, and not so much for others, but they made a presentation in regard that that's the site plan and other issues like that. But I just find it quite interesting that we're talking about 5 million there, and it has not fallen under any similar scrutiny.
Mr. Mayor, this resolution seemed to be flawed, because it talked about existing paving, streets, sidewalks, and public parking facilities. And the way it's written, it seemed like the money can be used for paving streets. We got about $2.5 million of greater needs for streets.
Well, Mr. Perkins, if it has $100,000 left over, that's considered to be capital improvements that could be used for paving streets.
But at the same time, we've seen a little bit of people vote on it.
Other comments?
Mr. Mayor and Board, we just seem to have a whole lot of issues all floating around as they normally seem to float. You know, let's review just a minute here. One becomes very, very weary of this entire subject when you look at the number of years that have been spent working and planning and thinking and changing and altering and so forth, starting out with the needs assessment by the professional firm that specializes in law enforcement facilities, followed by meetings in every ward, talking about need for facilities, where this particular facility topped the list of all the needs in all the wards, looking at the tremendous need that the Police Department has, and the handicap under which they operate to provide the services that our citizens demand. Almost an intolerable situation when you look at their physical facilities and the conditions under which they try to serve and protect. You look at all the public hearings, the lawsuits, the meetings, the letters to the newspaper, the Ed Op opinions, you look at all this stuff. We have spent an inordinate amount of time on this particular subject, and it has been thoroughly discussed. That was the implication tonight, that nobody knows what is being proposed. Mr. Schaefer sat, and we sat for several hours, as he went specifically down a list, talking about what is proposed in this facility. The difference between what was proposed is for the proposed cosmetic work to the City Hall facility, to allow the court to function better in space that might be vacated by the Police Department. It has been thoroughly outlined. We hear figures talked about, about you could do this, you could do that, and so forth, but no source or documentation for those figures. We just hear all these things, the calls and emails that I got today from residents of Ward Three, and we also heard tonight about democracy and all this type of situation. Yes, we exist in a democracy, the finest form in the world, but there's one key difference, it is representative democracy. We are elected by the people to represent their interests and make decisions. The calls and emails that I got today said, enough is enough. We have elected y'all to make these decisions, make the decisions, and let's move forward. It has been studied, filleted, twisted, enough. We have a proposal that while it is not the original proposal, because it has been shaved in terms of costs that now appear not to be required after an asbestos study was done, after the decision was made to try to use some force account demolition and hauling off anything to reduce cost of this. We have a project that moves forward with the police facility. The citizens of this town, certainly by a very small number of votes, said we don't want to issue $9 million. But what they also said, at least to me, was, those that chose to participate in that election said, we support this project. And certainly, that was the case overwhelmingly in the ward that I am privileged to represent. Mr. Mills, it disappoints me, in the article that you put in the newspaper, you use the article to beat on the mayor some, you use the article to beat on me some, but of more importance to me is the remarks that you made about Ward Three. And I've heard a number of comments about how disappointed they were that you injected issues like that into the article. Be that as it may, we have reached the point where we need to move forward with this project at a cost that is less than originally proposed. And I think that is what we need to do. We need to give the Police Department the facilities, the environment in which to operate to maximum efficiency.
Mayor and Board, if I may offer some comments as well. We have, this city has hashed and rehashed this issue going on, as was pointed out earlier tonight, seven to eight years. And in that time that we've debated and discussed, the police have been getting more and more and more cramped in the space that they have. And having spent time with our officers and speaking to them, I know that they are not only cramped, but demoralized, because they feel like we're never gonna move forward with this. And what I see is that we have a chance before us now to finally put an end, at least in part, to some of the contention that has plagued this city for seven to eight years. And it's been talked about, the referendum we had recently, but the, a clear majority, close to 70%, of the people that voted in my ward, voted in favor of us moving on with this. So I know where the people that I was elected to represent stand on this issue. But even if it were the other way around, and even if I knew for a fact that voting in favor of this tonight would, down the line, cost me my own reelection, it would be worth the price to me, because sometimes you have to do what is right, rather than what may or may not be popular. And that's all I have to say on this.
I'd only say, I concur that we've spent years working on this, and that's why I'm so disappointed tonight, that we have a resolution on our table that our attorney hasn't seen, the bond attorney isn't here to answer questions, and is clearly flawed in the number of mistakes that we've already identified. And I think that is the greater disservice to what's gonna happen tonight, that we weren't prepared. We weren't prepared to answer simple questions. And, you know, I voted for the earlier bond issue. I recommended it to my neighbors in the recent referendum. And in fact, in Ward Five, there was an overwhelming majority of people who supported the bond issue. And yet, the rules were clear, and the referendum failed. And I appreciate that this is, that unlike some of my colleagues tonight, I won't ignore that inconvenient truth. Elections matter.
Would you like the floor now?
And reference to Mr. McLaurin's remarks about me taking a look at you and the mayor, I did not, I was only stating facts, and I want you to know, Mr. McLaurin, that a big percentage of my calls were from your ward, and your people and your constituents in your ward is not as happy with you as you may think they are, because anytime you've got an issue, you go and get the same five or six people, drag them up here and let them get up here and say their thing that they've been prompted to say. But let me tell you, you've got a lot of people in your ward that agreeing with my proposal, because they don't, they got where they are by being conservative, not spending like everything. And we don't have any idea of what we're talking about spending tonight. We keep talking about all these...
The passage of time. We have shared your joy at the birth of your children and proudly, we have watched them grow. We've taken care of your health care needs during the good times and the not-so-good. Your parents and grandparents have depended upon us. Together, we have shared the struggles and the wonders of life. At Oktibah County Hospital, we are celebrating 30 years of being your lifelong choice in health care.
That others adjust the police department and the court. And my proposal is to try to do the three buildings to where each one of them will be respected, and we'd have something we could show people that this is what we are accomplishing. But I didn't intentionally, in no way, take a slam at you or the mayor either one. If I did, it'd probably be much worse than it was. Thank you.
Mr. Mills, I certainly hear what you say, and you certainly are entitled to your opinion.
I think, yes, sir.
Exactly.
Any other comments?
Mr. Chairman, Mr. McLaurin, Infrastructure Chairman, we've been meeting, and this is directly related to the bonds, we've been meeting in the past about some proposed water and sewer increases, and this is, and what Almond Mills is saying, that we have a lot of infrastructure needs that down the road, you're gonna, and see, down the road, you'll be hearing about proposed increases in water and sewer rates, but at the same time, if you give the people the right to be heard on these things, then we can move progressively forward in the right way. And there's just simply nothing wrong with giving the people the right to vote. And I've heard this over the last several weeks, how people really appreciate the idea and the concept of being given that opportunity. There's nothing wrong with it, and we deal with elections, and so I don't understand why there's some hesitation and reluctance. So hopefully, before final passage on this resolution that I think is gonna be offered in a few seconds, that this, that the members at this board, including the mayor, will give serious consideration in letting the people have the right to vote. There are my colleagues at this table who campaign on the right to vote. You know, if we're gonna campaign on something or represent something, you know, our work should be our bond. You know, we should do what we say we're gonna do, and should not change in the middle of things. The way I look at things, like it's been said, we all have our difference of opinion, but you know, we all need to consider that. Don't silence the people, give them the right to be heard, and I plead with my colleagues to do that.
Mr. Perkins, of course, I understand exactly what you're saying. Nobody opposes the people's right to vote. Nobody is attempting to silence the people. All those things that you're saying are not accurate in this particular situation.
You know, we just disagree with it. You know, we just don't have the same mindset.
It's a difference of philosophy as to the operation of this form of municipal government within the American system of democracy.
But just because you disagree does not mean it's incorrect, Almond.
Oh, I didn't say your position was incorrect. It was a, as was Mr. Mills's comments, an opinion, certainly.
So do we have a motion? Anyone willing to issue a motion for this resolution?
Not everybody jumping at this chair. Oh, Mr. Mayor and Board, for your consideration, I would offer, and I will read the motion in its entirety. The copy that you have before you has been approved by Bond Counselman, that he drafted the original. There are a few typos and things of this sort that I have recommended changing in this. Does nothing to alter the nature or scope of the bond issue. All the talk about legality, this type of thing, of course, is just a smokescreen. So I offer the following.
Mr. McLaurin?
Ma'am?
Before you start reading, note the $9,583 that was left in there from the first, down in paragraph, in section two.
This is another example of a flawed resolution.
Well, we've seen so many flaws, there's just another flaw.
Oh, thank you, Ms. Mills.
You said it right here.
Yeah. And so, let's us read this, and we can read it first to see if it says what you think it's supposed to say. "The Mayor and Board of Aldman of the City of Starkville, Mississippi, took up with consideration the matter of issuing general obligation bonds of said municipality in the maximum principal amount of $5,900,000." And I will read the thing, and then we can talk about it. "A resolution declaring the intention of the Mayor and Board of Aldman of the City of Starkville, Mississippi, to issue general obligation bonds of said municipality in the maximum principal amount of $5,900,000 to raise money for the purpose of erecting a police station and other municipal buildings..." for the purpose of erecting a police station and other municipal buildings within the corporate limits, and purchasing buildings and land therefore, and repairing, improving, adorning, and equipping the same or existing municipal buildings, and constructing, improving, and paving streets, sidewalks, and public parking facilities, and purchase of land therefore, and directing publication of notice of such intention. Whereas, the Mayor and Board of Alderman of the City of Starkville, Mississippi, the governing body, acting for and on behalf of said City of Starkville, Mississippi, the municipality, hereby finds, determines, adjudicates, and declares as follows. One, it is necessary and in the public interest to issue general obligation bonds," referred to as the bonds, "of the municipality in the maximum principal amount of five million nine hundred thousand dollars to raise money for the purpose of erecting a police station and other municipal buildings within the corporate limits, and purchasing buildings and land therefore, and repairing, improving, adorning, and equipping the same or existing municipal buildings, and constructing, improving, and paving streets, sidewalks, and public parking facilities, and purchasing land therefore, hereafter referred to as the authorized purpose." Number two, "The assessed value of all taxable property within the municipality, according to the last completed assessment for taxation, is one hundred sixty-six million seven hundred seventy-six thousand seven hundred ninety-four dollars. The municipality has outstanding bonded indebtedness subject to the fifteen percent debt limit prescribed by section twenty-one thirty-three three oh three Mississippi Code of nineteen seventy-two, in the amount of three million two hundred eighteen thousand seven hundred forty-seven dollars, and outstanding bonded and floating indebtedness subject to the twenty percent debt limit prescribed by section twenty-one thirty-three three oh three Mississippi Code of nineteen seventy-two, which amount includes the sum set forth above subject to the fifteen percent debt limit." In the amount, and they're giving the total amount of this bonded indebtedness, of nine million five hundred eighty-three thousand seven hundred ninety-seven dollars, "The issuance of the bonds hereafter proposed to be issued when added to the outstanding bonded indebtedness of municipality will not result in bonded indebtedness exclusive of indebtedness not subject to aforementioned fifteen percent debt limit, of more than fifteen percent of the assessed value of taxable property within the municipality, and will not result in indebtedness both bonding and floating, exclusive of indebtedness not subject to the aforementioned twenty percent debt limit, in excess of twenty percent of the assessed value of taxable property within the municipality, and will not exceed any constitutional or statutory limitation upon indebtedness which may be incurred by the municipality. Number three, "The municipality reasonably expects that it will incur expenditures for the authorized purpose prior to the issuance of the bonds, and that it should declare its official intent to reimburse such expenditures with the proceeds of the bonds upon the issuance thereof." Number four, "The municipality is authorized by sections twenty-one thirty-three three oh one through twenty-one thirty-three three twenty-nine Mississippi Code of nineteen seventy-two to issue the bonds hereafter proposed to be issued for the purpose hereafter set forth, for which purpose there are no other available funds on hand. Now therefore be it resolved by the governing body as follows. Section one, "The governing body hereby declares its intention to issue the bonds in the maximum principal amount of five million nine hundred thousand dollars to raise money for the authorized purpose pursuant to section one point one five oh hyphen two of Treasury Regulations," hereafter called the reimbursement regulations, "the governing authority hereby declares its official intent to reimburse expenditures made for the authorized purpose prior to the issuance of the bonds with the proceeds of the bonds to the extent permitted by the reimbursement regulations. The bonds will be general obligations of the municipality payable as to principal and interest out of and secured by an irrevocable pledge of the avails of a tax to be levied annually upon towled taxable property within the geographic limits of the municipality, which tax together with any other money is available for such purpose shall be sufficient to provide for the payment of the principal of and the interest on the bonds according to the terms thereof. The governing body proposes to direct the issuance of bonds in the amount for the purpose and secured, as aforementioned, at a meeting of the governing body to be held at its regular meeting place in the City Hall of the municipality at five-thirty P.M. on January two, two thousand and seven, or at some meeting held subsequent thereto. If ten percent of the qualified electives of the municipality are fifteen hundred, whichever is lesser, shall file a written protest with the clerk of the municipality against the issuance of such bonds on and before the aforementioned date and hour, then the bond shall not be issued unless authorized and an election on the question of the issuance of such bonds to be called and held as provided by law. If no protests be filed, then such bonds may be issued without an election on the question of the issuance thereof at any time within a period of two years after the date above specified. Section three, "This resolution shall be published once a week for at least three consecutive weeks in the Starkville Daily News, Octavah County, Mississippi, a newspaper having general circulation in the municipality and qualified under provisions of section thirteen-three thirty-one Mississippi Code of nineteen seventy-two. The first publication of this resolution shall be made not less than twenty-one days prior to the date fixed herein for the issuance of bonds, and the last publication shall not be, shall be made not more than seven days prior to such date. The clerk of the municipality is hereby directed to procure from the publisher of the aforementioned newspaper the customary approval publication of this resolution and have the same before the governing body on the date and hour specified in section two hereof." And then what is left is the place for a second, if there's a second, to the issuance, a recording of the vote by the members of the Board of Aldman, and what happened in the vote, if there is any, on this resolution.
So with you reading that, is that done in a form of a motion?
Oh, I would offer and amoo the adoption of the following resolution. "A resolution declaring the intention of the Mayor and Board of Aldman of the City of Starkville, Mississippi to issue general obligation bonds of said municipality in the maximum principal amount of five million nine hundred thousand dollars to raise money for the purpose of erecting a police station and other municipal buildings within the corporate limits, and purchasing buildings and land therefore, and repairing, improving, adorning, and equipping the same or existing municipal buildings, and constructing, improving, and paving streets, sidewalks, and public parking facilities, and purchasing land therefore, and directing publication of notice of such intention," with the rest of the resolution following as I have read it.
Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a motion with a second. We have discussed this, we've had protests, we've had some good input. Did you have a question?
I want to make amendment to the motion.
Let's hear it.
I'd like to make an amendment to the motion to require a binding referendum on the issuance of a bond be held in the next ninety days or as soon as is practical.
Okay, we have a motion to have a referendum. We will vote on the motion to the amendment. Do we have a second to that motion?
Yes, Mayor, I want a second. The amendment that's offered by the gentleman from Ward Two, and again, I'm going to take this final opportunity to just briefly address the board before this final roll call vote. Let me just say once again that this board authorized the election on September twenty-six, two double oh six. The people of this great city went to the polls, they voted not to issue the bonds for the municipal justice complex. The people have spoken. We do not need to go behind their voice. We need to give them an opportunity to be heard again. There's nothing improper by supporting this motion. I think it's a very excellent motion because it gives the people the right to be heard on this matter again. It gives the people the opportunity as to how their tax dollars should be spent, as to what they want them to be spent in that form or fashion. The election, we can also ensure that we address other infrastructure needs. The Infrastructure Committee is looking at some potential increases in water and sewer rates, and I think that they're going to be potentially imposed on the citizen of this city sometime in the future. So if this motion passes, there are going to be other additional tax burdens that are going to potentially arise without the citizens having a voice. There are multi-million dollars of needs in this city. There are at least two-point-five million dollars plus in streets, and I've articulated them earlier, water, sewer, infrastructure, annex areas, many millions of dollars. There is no place where we can get those money from. We have about less than five hundred thousand dollars for street overlay, and that won't touch the surface. We, in a situation where we need to just put this all out in one bond mill, one bond issue as opposed to multiple bond issues, and we need to put this out on the ballot, let the people have their say, and whatever's the final conclusion, that's what we need to adhere to. And this is not the right way to operate government. This motion, again, is an attempt to shove this matter down the voter's throat. It is another disrespect of not having the full board here. The citizens from Ward One, blessed to the heart, have pleaded with us tonight. No voice, no representation. They are being denied a fundamental right to hear, a right that's guaranteed to all of us under the Fifteenth Amendment of the Constitution, and they can't have a right to be heard. And yet, it appears that a majority at this table here wants to go ahead regardless of what the plea is, regardless of the fact that you want to have the right to. They don't want to hear that. They want to fulfill their mission. And in my opinion, that is not the best mission for the City of Starkville. And the best mission is, is to put this matter out to the people. We don't have a bond attorney here tonight, can't answer any question. City Attorney said, you know, he didn't practice bond law. We got a question we need to answer. It don't matter with them. They want to go ahead and proceed with this. This resolution is flawed, got language in here. The motion is supposed to be to issue up to five-point-nine million dollars in bonds for a municipal, for a police department, but yet it says erecting police stations, goes on to talk about streets, sidewalks. What is this resolution for? What is it really for? You know, it should be drafted for its intended purpose. It's not difficult to draft. So that, you know, if we're going to spend five-point-nine million dollars of taxpayer money without a vote, at least we should have the lawyer here. What was wrong with getting on the phone and saying, well, Mr. Wallace, we're going to have an important meeting here tonight, and we need you here in Starkville to answer questions? But yet, he's not here, and they want to vote issue five-point-nine million dollars in bonds, and they don't care what your tax is going to be, they can't answer the questions here tonight, they don't have the information. Well, probably, maybe, it could be, you know, and we take a recess, come back with some other information, not for sure. I mean, this, I mean, this is the rush to judgment information. We don't really know. This information was not in our packet, and we did not consider it. And, you know, there have been many times in the past where matters were not, things were not on the table, and we just took it under advisement, waited next meeting. Vice Mayor hadn't seen the plan, was not, you know, has not been made aware, didn't have the information. I asked, would you please defer this for two weeks so I can at least see the plan? No. They want to move this train forward, it don't matter what I say, what nobody else say, and it doesn't matter what the people say. And the people are the one who elected us here. Why not give them the voice? And that's what we should do. Let's defeat this motion on a roll call vote. And I'm not looking out for no political situational career here, I'm looking out for what is in the best interest of the City of Starkville, and that's my, that's my only concern here tonight. I want to do what I think that the people want done. This has nothing negative to Chief Lindley, nothing negative to the police department. I have supported the police department, and do support the police department. But this is just a matter of business, ladies and gentlemen, a matter of business. We've got the people in the annex areas since nineteen ninety-eight, and these people in my ward, you know, they riding up dirt roads, muddy roads, can't get in and out, Lewis Lane, all these roads are Hendrix, Treasure, you know, these people need services. I mean, but we don't have anything here before them tonight. Five years, no, if I do the math correctly, at least eight years. So ladies and gentlemen, let's defeat this motion that's before us tonight, and let's, the original motion, let's adopt this amendment that's offered by the gentleman from Ward Two, and let's let the people vote on this matter, and whatever they decide, that'll be what we'll abide by. So I urge that you will support the amendment that's offered by the gentleman for Ward Two.
We have a motion with a long second on the floor for the amendment. We will vote on the amendment first. All those in favor of the amendment, please raise your hand.
Mr. Mayor, please, there's a request for a roll call vote on the issue.
On the amendment?
Yes.
Okay, we'll do a roll call vote on the amendment. Not on the motion itself, but the amendment. We'll start at jury and Ms. Self. How do you vote?
Nay.
Mr. Corey? Mr. McLauren? Mr. Cox? Mr. Vice Mayor?
Yay.
We have a tie vote, and I break the tie, I vote against the amendment. It brings us back up to the original motion, that is, has a motion and a second, and we will do the same with a roll call. Mrs. Self?
Yay.
Mr. Corey?
Yay.
Mr. Mills?
No.
Mr. McLauren?
Yay.
Mr. Cox?
Nay.
Mr. Vice Mayor?
Nay.
It brings us up to a tie vote again, and the mayor votes in favor of the motion. It passes four to three. The next item on our agenda, I believe, is another issue pertaining to the resolution declaring the intention of the mayor and the board of Aldman of the City of Starkville to issue general obligation bonds of said municipality in the maximum principal amount of five million three hundred seventy-five thousand dollars to raise money for the purpose of purchasing land for parks and public playgrounds, and improving equipment, and adopting the same, including the construction, repairing, equipping of recreational facilities, preparing and equipping athletic fields, and purchasing and constructing buildings, and purchasing land thereof, and repairing, improving, adorning and equipping the same, and directing publication of notice of such intention. This has been discussed, it's been presented to us. This is an issue that we have to pass on, even if the Parks and Rec Board has enough
So moved, Mr. Mayor.
Wow, that sure was simple compared to the others. Do we have a second to that? We have a motion and a second, but we just go out and fork out five-point-three million. Any discussion?
Does anyone want it read?
Read the vote, Mr. Mayor.
This was in fact.
We have a motion and a second. All those in, we will have to roll call this again. We don't, all those in favor, please raise your hand. All those opposed? The next item on the agenda, I believe we had so many consent, is, is that the Old West Point Road? Yeah. Consideration of the Acceptance of the Old West Point Water Association Service Area for the Division of Potable Water. This is just a part of it that would be in the northeast corridor. Doug, help me out here. In the Pat Station Road area, is that correct?
Yes, sir. The east side of, well, the Pat Station Road.
Anytime we have the opportunity to buy a water association service area here, we should, we should jump to do that. We are presently have had some problems with some other areas in which they refuse to sell us the water association rights, and this is an opportunity, we have to purchase these rights.
They're not selling it to us, sir. They're just giving it.
They're going to just give it to us, so it's not costing us a dime to take it over.
And Mr. Devlin, they have, the Old West Point World Water Association has indicated their desire not to serve this particular area, and will support an application with the Public Service Commission to transfer the rights to that particular portion of their service area to the city.
Mr. Mayor, I'm going to support this upon the recommendation of our city engineer.
Okay, is that a form of a motion? Mr. Perkins?
No, I'm not going to make the motion. I'm going to vote for it upon Mr. Wells's recommendation.
Do we have a motion? That we accept this proposed consideration, accepting this?
So moved.
Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor of this, please raise your hands. Everybody's in favor of that. Thank you. The next item was consent, consent. The next item is Consideration of Proposed Amendment to Adjust the Composition of the Planning and Zoning Commission from nine members to seven members.
Mr. Mayor asks...
Mr. Mayor, as for this item to be put on the agenda after a public hearing, and just like to make a brief comment before I read the ordinance for our consideration. When I joined the board, one of the main reasons that I ran, and I believe was selected, is because of a previous decision by the board and planning and zoning commission to approve the Sugar Shacks in my neighborhood. This is something that immediately caused blight, called instant blight. Of course, with a name like Sugar Shacks, it's hard to, you don't even need to use the word blight. And of course, it's affecting our property values. And I want stronger protections for all of our neighborhoods. And for that reason, this, in my mind, seems to be a common sense adjustment to ensure fairness. And the ordinance that we have is an Ordinance Amending Ordinance Number 2005-5 of the city of Starkville, to reduce the number of members of the Planning and Zoning Commission from nine to seven. Whereas there is a need to monitor growth and development in the city of Starkville, and whereas the mayor and board of aldermen establish commissions of citizenry which work to regulate the city's development in ways which are in the best interest of the city's citizens, and foster such growth and development consistent with the city's extended plan. And whereas the city of Starkville Ordinance Number 2005-5, which created the Planning and Zoning Commission, and set the membership at nine, and whereas the mayor and board of aldermen believe it is in the best interest of the city of Starkville to amend its city ordinance Number 2005-5, Sections 2 and 3, to reduce the number of members from nine to seven, as they believe that this amendment will allow a more efficient operating commission, and allow the commission to better serve its citizens. Now therefore be it ordained by the mayor and board of aldermen of the city of Starkville that ordinance Number 2005-5 is amended, and that the following shall be adopted as the amendment to set ordinance. Section 2, Composition. The Planning and Zoning Commission shall consist of seven members, and shall be representative of the geographic and socioeconomic mix of the population as a whole. Further, as it is the desire of the board of aldermen that no members currently serving on the commission lose their position, the composition will consist of the current nine members until June 30th, 2008, when two members, one from Ward 1, and one from Ward 3's terms will expire. At that time, the composition of the commission will revert to seven members. Each member of the commission shall be a qualified elector of the city at the time of appointment and during incumbency. To be appointed to the commission, a person must have been a resident of the city for two years prior to appointment. Section 3, Appointment. The members of the Planning and Zoning Commission shall be appointed by a simple majority of the board of aldermen, and one member shall be appointed from each ward. The city clerk is directed to cause this ordinance to be published one time in the Starkville Daily News, and to obtain proof of publication thereof. In the effective date, this ordinance shall become effective and become in full force from and after its passage in a manner provided by law, or on and after the fourth day of January 2007.
Is that in a form of a motion as well?
Yes, that is.
Do we have a second to this motion?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Do we have any further discussion?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, a few comments on this. Alderman Cox has stated in the beginning of his presentation why he thought this was necessary. In my opinion, it hardly addresses the things he was talking about at all, and in fact, may work to the contrary of this. We've heard a lot also around the board table tonight about listening to the people and things of that sort, and we tend to forget the public hearing that was held on this, where everyone that spoke against the reduction of the size of the Planning and Zoning Commission, with the exception, I think, of one person. The people are very, very clear about wanting to represent the city for good, effective planning and zoning. And having attended a number of the planning and zoning meetings, and one of the gentlemen pointed this out this tonight, there are often situations when a number of members are absent. So reducing the size to seven could end up effectively having decisions being made by a group of three individuals, which hardly is a fair representation across the city. Nothing is wrong with the existing makeup of nine members. It offers the chance to represent each ward, it offers the chance to balance the planning commission in a variety of other considerations, whether it be race, gender, occupation, special expertise that might be appropriate to the commission. And really, no useful purpose is served by this reduction, and indeed, will create, I suspect, given absenteeism at most of the meetings, ultimately, a very serious problem for the city.
Any other discussion?
Oh, Mr. Mayor?
Yes, ma'am.
I concur with Alderman McLaurin, with seven. You will have six voting, because the chairman does not vote. So when you have two to three people absent, and they will be absent at times, then that reduces the number that we have voting for the city, and voting and making decisions for the city of Starkville. So I am, for the reason that Alderman Cox stated, for the best interest of Starkville, that's why I will vote against this amendment to the ordinance.
Are there any other discussions in regard to this? If not, I'll call for a vote. All those in favor of this amendment to Planning and Zoning, please raise your hand if you're in favor.
One, two, three, four.
All those opposed? That brings us down to Office of the City Clerk, the airport's consent, the approval of the claims docket as of November the 30th.
Madam Clerk, you recommend approval. Just to be able to approve of the claims docket.
We have a motion to approve the claims docket?
Second.
We have a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay.
Nay.
Electric Department. It's about your report on TBA rate adjustment, ended at about 10 cents a month?
Yes, sir. Just wanted, for the board's information, to briefly tell you that received a letter from TBA a couple of days ago, where that they notified us that they will be exercising the fuel cost adjustment effective January 1. It will be one hundredth of a cent per kilowatt hour, which will actually be about one to 10 cents for an average household per month. That's all I have.
And does that need approval on us for this report? Or is that just, we've already signed the contract, I believe? We need to go into closed session, discuss, going into executive session, to discuss personnel.
Are we to that point yet?
Yes.
Okay, before we do that, let's go back and specifically approve the items on the consent agenda.
Consent, yes. Would you like to read?
So I would move approval of the consent agenda, which contains the following things. The authorization for the advertisement for the filling of vacancies on boards and commissions within the city. The approval of 5,000, I believe it was, for the tri-county narcotics. To match an additional funding grant for the tri-county narcotics task force.
Airport, I think.
Just a second here. Authorization for the advertisement for bids for fuel farm equipment for the municipal airport. Acceptance of the quarterly financial, excuse me, for the monthly financial statement of the city. Authorization for the payment to the city's new health and life insurance carrier, Humana and Principal Insurance Companies, in the amount of 1,000, excuse me, 106,0891.82. And let me digress, Mr. Mayor, if I could, with a question of the city clerk. This is Humana and Principal Insurance Companies, are we talking two entities or just one?
Two entities.
One covering health, one covering life?
Yeah, two.
Okay, and dental and life. All right. To include that payment in the amount of 106,891.82.
Go to the back page.
The authorization to advertise for, on behalf of public services, the 12-inch PVC water pipe, and approval of alternate, additional alternate Number 2, in the amount of 15,000 dollars for the Currie Street Filter Rehab Contract, where an air blower needs replacing. Those items I would list as consent agenda items, and move their approval.
Do we have a second?
Second.
You've heard the consent items listed. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. That brings us down to personnel, and it's been requested that that and the second item be moved to executive session. We need a motion to go into closed session to discuss executive session.
So moved.
Do we have a second? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
We're in closed session now. We're in closed session now.